The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice up and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a published notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on January 7th, 2024.
Thank you. High school student representatives for FBLA, Mr. Sutton? Do you have a microphone? Do you want to grab the one? Okay, come on up.
Okay, so, starting off with some things that happened in the past. So, January 7th to January 22nd, FBLA had a book drive as one of their community service events, and a lot of books were donated by members under the FBLA Kids in the Rundown. Also, from MTHS FBLA, on January 8th, they hosted the 2024 Northern Region Summit at MTHS, and students and FBLA officers attended several workshops, and they had the opportunity to network with their peers on topics such as creating business plans, teamwork, and technology in business. In the beginning of January, students in Visual Arts III and IV created self-portraits, and they used a style of painting that was popularized by artist Chuck Close. When viewed up close, the portraits have separate tiles of artwork that, from a distance, look like a cohesive image, and the portraits are on display over there in the media center. On January 9th, students in Mrs. Heinz's anatomy class prepared for their bone practical exam by having a friendly competition, and students had to close their eyes and name the skeletal bone at various stations around the room. And then recently, host member Mai-3-Iyer won first place in medical assisting at the Northern Regional Competition. Members Elvin Seethakunen and Sammy Hendy took fourth place in emergency medical technician, and all three students will be representing Montville at the state tournament in March. Another student, Sonia Vaidia, was one of the winners in the New York Times 100-word memoir contest, and junior Alex Pelop had a fourth-place finish in the one-mile run at the Millrose Trials, and he also set a new school record in the open one-mile. And then senior basketball player Jackie Sinella represented MTHS at this year's National Girls and Women in Sports Day. She was recognized last week at Rutgers. Then, some things that happened in the present. So, midterms for the high school will be starting tomorrow, January 24th, and they will run through next Monday, January 29th. These days will have two long periods each day, followed by an early dismissal. Today, during lunch in the auditorium, FBLA had a guest speaker event, which featured Morris County Clerk Anne Grossi, and she's going into her 10th year as clerk of Morris County, and she shared her interactions with FBLA members, with other government offices, and her day-to-day life. The Interact Club is currently holding a winner items drive to collect new and used winner items to donate to individuals in need, and then Math Club held its fourth math league contest today after school. The Class of 2025 currently is also holding an apparel sale to raise money for their grade, and this fundraiser will run until January 31st.
So, the girls' basketball approaches the middle of their season with a record of 4-10. They start the first round of Morris County Tournament as the 14th seed against Parsippany on Saturday. Boys' basketball currently has a record of 6-9. Sophomore Chris Ferrari and junior Anthony Feaster have been lighting up the boards, averaging 13 points each game. Bowling is currently holding strong with an undefeated record of 14-0. Senior Eli Kaufman leads the team with the season-high score of 299. They recently became the NJC Bowling Tournament Champions over winter break. Ice hockey has a season record of 6-8. Their senior goalie and captain Alexis Riley recently had her 1,000th save, and senior captain Matt Trupari hit his 100 points last week as well. The wrestling team currently has a record of 9-6. They held their Bronco Night last week, having the youth wrestling programs come to support them at their match. Boys' and girls' swim both hold a record of 2-5. Their recent victory over Vaquonic was the first time in over 10 years both teams won simultaneously. Both the girls' and boys' relay teams took first place at this meet. And then the winter track and field team has been progressing well this season. Recently, the girls' freshman team won the Morris County Championships, as well as many victories from other athletes. So, now, to move on to some things that are going to happen in the future. The MTHS incoming student orientation will be on Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:00 p.m. Incoming students and their parents will get a first glimpse into high school life and the rich and varied programs that MTHS has to offer. The SEC will attend a student summit at Madison High School on February 1st to represent Montville spirit and fundraising ideas while collaborating with other schools in North Jersey. January 31st marks the start of marking period III. FBLA will be having their annual state leadership conference, TAHARAs, in Atlantic City from March 11th to March 13th. And finally, Key Club will be having their annual volleyball marathon on March 8th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. [applause] Okay, is there anything that we're doing?
Yes, we're celebrating a wonderful evening of students and educators. So, we're going to start with the students. We're going to ask Mr. Green to come up here and tell us a little bit about the Chamber Choir at La Czar.
Good evening, everybody. If you don't already know me, my name is Jordan Green. I'm the choral director over at La Czar. This is my first-ever board meeting, although I've been in Montville for four years, so maybe I should come to more. But I am so incredibly excited to present the Chamber Choir for you all tonight. This group of students is kind of a branch of our 7th and 8th grade choir. It's open by audition to 7th and 8th graders, and in addition to learning extra, more challenging pieces in class, they meet Thursday mornings and have donated a lot of extra time, even on Saturdays, to come and rehearse. And without further ado, I'm going to have them come up here and hopefully have room for them. Come on, guys. [applause] We do have two selections for you tonight.
Don't you weep, Mary, don't you weep. Tell Mother not to mourn. Mary, don't you weep. Tell Mother not to mourn. If I could, I surely would. Stand on the rock where Moses stood. Pharaoh's army got drowned dead. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Moses stood on the shreds he shored. Spoke the water with the two-by-four. Pharaoh's army got drowned dead. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Mary, don't you weep. Tell Mother not to mourn. Mary, don't you weep. Tell Mother not to mourn. Oh, brothers, sisters, don't you cry. There will be good times high and low. Pharaoh's army got drowned dead. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Oh, Mary, don't you weep, don't mourn. Oh, Mary, don't you weep, don't mourn. Pharaoh's army got drowned dead. Oh, Mary. Oh, Mary. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Oh, Mary, don't you weep, don't mourn. Pharaoh's army got drowned dead. Oh, Mary, don't weep, don't weep.
There you go. There we go. Thank you.
That was a wonderful job, and we thank you very much for entertaining us tonight. We believe here at Montville in the four A's of education. We have the activities, like clubs and activities. We have the arts, which you just saw before you. You heard about it in our report about the athletics, and now we're going to direct our attention to all the academics and the educators that are here. So, tonight, we're going to recognize 15 people that are very deserved in their award, and we're going to ask the principal to come on up with the two recipients. She's going to say a few words about them, and then we'll step over to the side to step and repeat, take a little picture. So, we're going to start with the elementary schools, starting with Cedar Hill.
I'd like to call up two of our fabulous educators. First is Vicki Marqueta. While relatively new to Cedar Hill School, she is not new to education nor new to the community. She is a former home and school president. Her children are here, and they go to our school as well. Vicki is our 4th grade teacher, recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award. Our next recipient is the Governor's Educational Specialist Award. Again, not a new to education or not new to Cedar Hill. I borrowed her permanently from Hilldale School, so thank you, Jill, for hiring this wonderful person. So, Tiffany Salvados, our instructional coach, and makes my job so much easier and makes the building run so smooth with her interventions and things of that sort. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. On behalf of our entire school, thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight. We're very pleased to announce that our educational services professional at William Mason School is Olivia Maggiore. I promise I'll be brief. I touched base with Olivia's colleagues the other day just to find out some of the superlatives that they use to describe working with Olivia, and she was described as the following. Olivia is hardworking, she's loyal, dependable, kind-hearted, and sweet. They also said that she has a unique ability to break down the most difficult task for students and make it simple and understandable. Congratulations, Olivia, and thank you all. Our next recipient for the Teacher of the Year is Mr. Don Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler is a Montville Township High School graduate. He is also a resident and a 27-year veteran teacher at William Mason School. I did the same thing for Mr. Wheeler. I connected with some of his students, and they described Mr. Wheeler in the following ways. Mr. Wheeler is a great teacher and weatherman. Mr. Wheeler is fun. Mr. Wheeler is nice and amazing. Mr. Wheeler is fun, he's loving, he's helpful, he's kind, he's fair, he's the best teacher in the world. I will say this, Mr. Wheeler is a weather buff. So, Dr. Gorman, I know you've had a tough stretch the past couple weeks. If you need any help, I think you guys should exchange numbers. Congratulations to both of our winners.
Congratulations to all of our winners. I'd like to introduce our educational services professional, Miss Tammy McMahon. Tammy has been with us for 17 years at Valley View, 35 years approximately, in education. Certified teacher. She's served in many different grade levels. She builds trusting relationships, greeting children every day at the door. She knows their interests and their hobbies, and then she sends them off fully packed and ready to do their homework. She's a certified teacher, as I noted, and she can step in whenever we don't have any subs, which is common these days. She works with the small groups. Her positive energy encourages not only the students but also our staff. She co-chairs our Sunshine Committee, plans lots of fun activities for us, and keeps our morale positively flowing throughout the year. Tammy is a solid teammate and a valued colleague, and she has her entire mishboka, not only her fan base in the back, but raise your hands if you're related to Tammy. Congratulations. [applause] Erin Sullivan. I think our clans come from the same part of Ireland. Erin Sullivan is a 25-year veteran in education. When I came to Valley View, Erin was in basic skills. I saw her talent, and I said, Erin, please take over a classroom. Not to say that basic skills teachers don't do the most important job in the school, but I can put Erin anywhere, and I have. She has been so flexible. Sometimes we cut sections, only when we have to, and I say, Erin, I need somebody to move to 3rd grade, and we need somebody to move to 4th grade. Erin always says yes, and she does it with such a sense of positivity and expertise, and she always does a wonderful job. The key thing about Erin is she builds trusting relationships, not only with the kids but their parents. It's not unordinary for a parent to cross their fingers. Not come to me, because I don't take requests, but if a child has Erin frequently, the parent will hope that they had Erin for the younger child. That's the way it should be. She also co-advises our student council. We save manatees, we give to the angel fund, and we just had an enormous toy drive for Senator Pernaccio. We have our wax museum because of Erin. She attends musicals, she's behind us in the science fair, and plans with us for Steam Week. Some people don't know that she has a past, not tawdry. She was a softball coach for Montville Township and had winning teams not too long ago. Erin has a welcoming environment, not only for the kids that come into her classroom, for me as well. And I have been going and talking to her kids and have a wonderful time in Erin Sullivan's wonderful classroom. Thank you, Erin.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call up our educational services professional, Sue Biao. Sue has been at Hilldale for only one year, but three of her children went through the Hilldale School, so we feel like she's been there forever, or she feels like, only one year with me. Sue comes to school every day with a smile on her face. She walks to school every day with weights in her backpack with a smile on her face. She has only been there one year, but she is just welcomed by everyone. When I was hiring Sue, everybody I spoke to was like, you have to have her, she's the best, and she really is. So, congratulations, Sue. And our Teacher of the Year, Stacy Hogan. Stacy has been with us for 14 years and 16 years in education. For those of you that have been here around a bit, you have probably worked on a committee with Stacy or done a rewritten curriculum with Stacy. She is involved in almost every aspect of Hilldale. She's also involved in so many aspects of the district. The district is lucky to have her, we are lucky to have her, and congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to invite our winners, Mrs. Lindsay DiGretto and Mr. Rosé. Lindsay and Rose, if you'd come up, please. Lindsay is currently one of our specialized teachers. She's been with us for 14 years. She works with our primary-level students, and I can regale you with tales of her skills, her academic prowess, but that all of our Teachers of the Year possess those skills. It's the little things, the extra things that our teachers do that get them recognized as a candidate for Teacher of the Year. And for me, one of the things that I always remember that Lindsay does for us is our Footprints Program. Now, my first year as a principal, 11 years ago, we were having a lot of issues with our girls coming back off of the recess, off the playground, a lot of girl drama, as we used to call it, and I would speak with my school counselor, and I said, Doug, there's got to be something we can do. We talked about it, we had an idea about trying to get the girls together. We talked about it, we had an idea about trying to get the girls together, to talk about issues that are unique to that pre-adolescent experience. So I had a meeting, which I invited Lindsay to, along with a couple of others, presented the idea, told them the problem, presented the idea, and of course, I always say, now Lindsay, you can say no, it's okay. Now, as a non-tenure teacher, what do you think she's going to say? But she did accept the challenge of the Footprints Program. And for the last 13 years, she and two of her colleagues, Danielle Cabana and Alessia DeBrey, meet with our students, starting in 3rd grade, and for six weeks, they just meet during their lunch periods, and they discuss the issues that are unique to, for girls in their pre-adolescent years. And now more than ever, especially with the power of social media, the girls need to hear what they're going to experience and how to become stronger, and how to ignore what they see outside and social media, and see that there's more strength in numbers, strength being together, being part of a team. As a result of that hard work, we don't have the issues that we used to have when I first arrived. And that's truthfully due to Lindsay's efforts. So we cannot thank you enough for that, for everything you do with your work at Woodmont. Rose is real lucky, but Rose has been with us for 10 years, no, 11 years, excuse me. Four years as an aide, nine years as para. When you're around Rose, it's like being an array of sunshine. Just bright, warm, gentle, and for all these years I've worked with her, she has yet to call me by my first name. I've told her repeatedly, Rose, we've been years, it's okay, you can call me Doug. She can't, it's Mr. Esposito. It's Mr. Es... But I think that speaks to who Rose is. It's her sense of integrity, it's her sense of respect, it's her sense of recognizing the professionalism of the position. So even though we have a lot of jokes over the years and a lot of stories to tell, she can't let that sense of formality go. But I think, again, that's a testament to who she is as an individual, the respect she has for her colleagues, for her professionals, and for her students. So Rose, congratulations.
For those who don't know me, I'm Mike Bishut on the Prizl Lizar. Really thank everyone for coming and supporting our award winners. First up for Lizar is our Educational Services Professional, that's Ms. Catherine Alici Pelleci. Catherine's been at Lizar for 12 years. She's held multiple positions, sometimes throughout a week, depending on what the needs of the students are, serving in both our RCR sections, our resource, SIL, life skills, you name it. But what's extremely special about Catherine is how dedicated she is to her students, and the kindness and compassion she shows to everyone, and on a daily basis. And all of those things combined make her well-deserving on this award. So, Ms. Pelleci. And our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Karen Wardell. Karen has also been at Lizar since 2012. She is one of our science teachers, predominantly 7th grade for her career. She also has certification in art, which comes out in her lessons and in her classroom. Karen does a lot for our building. She's one of the coordinators of Steam Day, she's one of the leaders of the Science Olympiad, she's an advisor on the Ally Group, and currently she's working on the set design for our musical coming up. Karen recently won two major grants, one with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, in which we had students build concrete reefs that we then went down, she went down to Point Pleasant with the students, and they brought a charter boat out and dumped them off the coast by Point Pleasant. And also with the Danforth Plant Science Center in Missouri, where she won a grant through them. She was recognized by the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum as a teacher innovator and accepted into that institute. And then recently, very recently, she was recommended for the Robert E. Jaeger Zembari Teaching Award in Science.
Good evening, everyone. Apologize for anyone I have my back to. My name is Doug Samper. I'm principal of Montville Township High School. I'd like to start off by thanking the Board of Education and the Superintendent for hosting this recognition for the Montville Educators of the Year. And especially congratulations to all the Educators of the Year from the different buildings being recognized this evening. MTHS, here at the high school, we recognized three Educator of the Year awards. And by the way, coincidentally, all three of our recipients, I believe it's the first time in my time here at the high school, all of them began their teaching careers in education here at Montville Township High School. I'd like to call up Ms. Christy Choi, who's the recipient of our Princeton University Christy began at MTHS more than seven years ago as a special education teacher. She later became additionally certified as a high school math teacher. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Applied Math and a Master's of Arts with a concentration in special education. We learned that she was inspired to become a teacher because of her mother, who was also a social studies teacher in South Korea. Please join me again in recognizing Ms. Christy Choi. The second award recipient is our Education Services Professional of the Year, Ms. Kathleen Ms. Kathleen Sanzon began in Montville Township High School more than 11 years ago as a physical education, health, a physical education and health teacher, as well as an assistant athletic trainer. She holds bachelor's degrees in both physical education and athletic training, as well as a master's in technology integration. She was inspired to become an athletic trainer by her high school athletic trainer. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Kathleen Sanzon. Our third and final award recipient is our Teacher of the Year award recipient. I'm calling up Ms. Jaclyn Hines. Jackie began at Montville Township High School more than, well, 14 years ago and exactly three days ago. So her anniversary just passed, as a science teacher. She holds a bachelor's degree in biology and a master's degree in teaching and learning with a specialization in technology. In addition to her excellent classroom teaching, she's been an integral part of our co-curricular program, serving as a coach in multiple sports and an advisor to various clubs and activities. So thank you very much. We'll take a three-minute break, and those are finals. You're allowed to leave. And anybody else, you know, it's a school night, so we understand. What a wonderful evening. So, you know, it's just great to celebrate all the wonderful things the students and the teachers are doing, and other educators and professionals in the district. So it's such a great way, sort of, the school year, of the new year. I just want to share, we are also starting a new medlec enrichment program. On the agenda is approving some of the teachers that may be offering this. So with this approval, then we'll be putting out a flyer, as well as asking people to register. These will be different courses, two foods courses, an arts course, and a steam course. These will be run after school for eight weeks, and they vary from the grades 2 to the 11th grade. So depending on the, you know, the people that sign up, that's how we'll run these classes. It's the first of its kind, and I think we have a lot of success. We want to continue offering more of these enrichment programs throughout the year and into the summer. And also, over the, in the board packet this weekend, I shared with everybody the post-analysis of the referendum, so you all had that, and hopefully had a chance to read through them. Thank you.
No report. No report. Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. I just want to point out a couple of quick things that you'll indulge me in, and that would be that Valley View participated in Pajama Day that raised $2,000 for Jordan's Hospital of Philadelphia. And Lizar Student Council raised $1,000 for DCPP, Foster Care System in our state. So thank you all to those kids. That's a wonderful thing to do, to give back. Also, I would be remiss in not mentioning that 11 members of our high school were selected for the NJ SMA Regional Choir, one for the Regional Orchestra, and two for the NJ MEA Regional Band. So congratulations to them as well. Moving on to committee reports. Finance facilities, Karen.
Thank you, David. The finance committee met right before tonight's meeting. First and foremost, the administration has begun to formulate and think about plans on accommodating our student enrollment going forward in the wake of the Hillel referendum. They're kind of charting out where our students will be placed in terms of small group construction, art, and music. This will, the budget is being tailored to the needs of each building. The administration has met with the architects to discuss our open projects, as well as non-refund and referendum projects, and will begin to prioritize those. And the administration is very interested in receiving input from the board of education members, as well as the community. So look forward to more on that in your future.
Thank you. Curriculum, Michelle. Policy, Joe.
No report.
Communications, Mike Rapport.
No reporter.
Safety, Christine.
No report.
Hey, I see a pattern. Delegate Liaisons, New Jersey School Board Association, Karen.
Pattern will be broken.
You are the only one speaking.
It's okay, I don't mind. So a couple of things going on with New Jersey School Boards. The Board of Directors met January 5th. We, of course, recognize, school board, January as a school board recognition month. We had a financial update, and finances at school boards is sound and strong. There was also a personnel update with some new hires, senior policy manager, legal counsel, et cetera, new field service representatives. Also, at the January 17th meeting of the State Board of Education, they passed a resolution recognizing January as school board recognition month, and I had the pleasure, privilege, and honor to accept the resolution on behalf of the, all 5,000 school board members in the state of New Jersey. We'll be traveling to Washington, D.C. this weekend, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and we have lined up visits with a number of our local congressional representatives, so I'm looking forward to that a lot.
Safe travels. Okay, Morris County School Board, Michelle.
The next meeting is virtual on Thursday, February 8th. It's roundtables with discussion topics of pilot programs, new and effective programs, how does your board do this, and how can school boards impact legislation. So just be sure to register on the Morris County School Board's website for Thursday, February 8th, and save the date, Wednesday, March 20th, at County College Morris at the Unson Heroes Awards Ceremony.
Okay, thank you. Morris County Education Services, Joe.
Yes, we had a meeting on January 10th. Two items that we did was we approved the rates for services for the year '24-'25, as well as approving the superintendent's contract from January 24th to June 2028.
Okay, good. And DAC, drug awareness.
Yes, there's actually the community program going on right now in the auditorium. We have Homeland Security and Drug Enforcement Agency, as well as some speakers there discussing their recovery, so.
Good, good. Mago Athletic Boosters, Charlie.
Unfortunately, the meeting was scheduled last week, but it was closed, canceled due to the snow and the ice. and it's going to be rescheduled.
Okay, school liaisons, Karen, Cedar Hill?
So Cedar Hill met on Tuesday, January 9th, also virtually due to the weather. They talked about their spring fundraiser. It's a fun run being held on April 8th. Also Bingo Night is Friday, February 2nd. In a couple of days, January, well tomorrow actually, January 24th, there's Skydome Planetarium. March 8th is Mr. Sox World of Rock. And they have a dine and donate coming up February 14th at Anthony Franco Pizza.
Okay, that's nice. Okay, Hilldale, Charlie?
No report.
Valley View, Joe?
They had a meeting on January 17th but I was unable to attend the prior meeting.
Okay, William Mason, John?
I seem to only get updates on food. I know I commented last meeting that we're only going to use Char-Wells three times a week instead of four, I believe. They're going to another vendor. I'll let you know how it works out but that's where we're at.
Okay. Woodmont, Mike Palmer?
Met virtually on January 16th. Actually, we always meet virtually. It seems to work out better for people there. Had a discussion with the guidance council, really more of an educational thing with the parents, where I discussed the concept of bullying versus conflict and how to recognize the difference between the two. As you may have understood from just reading the good news, it was known in calling last week at Woodmont. So the two things kind of fell in line with each other. Talked about parent volunteers, thanking for events including Holiday Boutique. The Pools After Dock unfortunately was canceled because of the weather. Discussed other fundraisers including the Pizza Kits, the Gertrude Hawk fundraiser. Michelle Sullivan game is going to be April 14th. Discuss the fact that we're trying to raise money for a new playground there and we don't have a new meeting date.
Thank you. Okay, Lazar, Christine?
No report.
High school has not yet met, right?
Actually had a meeting this evening.
Oh, that's right, this evening, yeah.
Pushes no report.
Okay, negotiation committees. MTEA, Karen?
We had, we had a meeting last night and it was very productive. We exchanged proposals, answered questions from, both sides had questions and needed some clarification. So we did that and all in all, it was, it was a good meeting. And we have a date set, I believe, for February 6th? Okay, and 27th? And 27th.
Okay. MTAA, Charlie?
Yes, I'll be contacting Mr. Sanford tomorrow and we'll schedule a meeting with him. We're trying to one-on-one see how it goes. And as soon as I get information back, I will make the committee aware of it.
And Joe, you're the MT. SIA?
Yes, we have a date set for February 7th for first meeting.
Okay, good. Okay, this is time for public participation, our first session in public participation. If you have anything to, or anything that you want to say to the board about items on the agenda, I invite you to come up to the board, up to the microphone, tell us your name and give us your comments. Have we seen no one making a move?
Only on agenda.
On agenda. We will have a second session at the end where you can tell us anything you want to talk to us about. But seeing that no one else has anything on the agenda, I ask for a motion for items I through N?
Second.
Okay. Any questions on the minute? Section I? Section J, GIPS? Facilities, section K, any questions? Section L, personnel?
Yes, we have one retirement that I want to just make note of. After 34 years as an educator, 22 of which were here in Monville, Deborah Meanan has decided to retire. As a school counselor, Lazar, she started the Random Acts of Kindness Program, was involved in the Character Education Committee where Lazar received state and national recognition, ran the peer-to-peer leadership program, conducted the Leadership Advisory Program and was nominated for Counselor of America. Over the years, Deb has gone above and beyond to support the students in her caseload and their families. Deb is a professional who is committed and passionate about education, both with academic and mental health and wellness areas. We wish her all the best in her next phase of her personal and professional career.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, section M, curriculum, any questions? None. Section N, policy? In a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes or no vote? Motion, motion I through N, are you voting yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daultrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Sfanna?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes. Section D, closed session. There is no further closed session. Section Q and R, old business. General Board Comments, new business?
Can I just make a general comment? A couple of things about tonight. First of all, it's just so great to see the teachers. I think what we do here is so important because I think teachers, staff, it's so important that they know that we appreciate what they do and that I think when you understand that your employer knows what you do is good work, it just gives you momentum and, you know, keeps good feelings going and I'm just so glad we do that. Now about the Lazar group, I will say this, coming out of COVID, we've had, a lot of schools are saying we are kind of getting back to where we were before COVID and I'm telling you, a lot of the schools are kidding themselves. They're really not near where they were. I can tell that just from listening to like tapes and recordings of like regional bands and things like that. They're not where they were. Lazar has that trend tremendously. They're not only where they were, I think they're past it. I haven't gotten to hear most of the seventh, eighth grade concerts in person because that's Wednesday's when I have my own band rehearsal. I've heard tapes, they're great. I was at the Lazar sixth grade rehearsal last week. Now just to put things in perspective, how many are in the sixth grade classrooms at Lazar? About 250, 260, something like that? And they had, I believe it was 72 kids in band, I believe, 75 in chorus and something like 59 in orchestra. Not to mention the quality. And they're just doing really great things at Lazar and that's such an important feeder program for the high school. I wish I had a chance to say it when the kids were here, but I know that they, they record the meetings and maybe somebody will direct the instructor's attention to the tape to hear the comments. Just want to thank, you know, Mr. Greif for all he's done. To listen to that chymbra choir, it was almost an embarrassment of riches to hear the kind of balance they have, which most middle schools don't have. And it was done musically, pitch, to hear the soprano is actually singing on top of that, the screeching voice is just blending. It's just a phenomenal performance and Mr. Greif has also done things like bringing the choir to Relay for Life. He's been a great ambassador for the community. So just want to say hats off to these, at program at Lazar, you're just doing a fantastic job. You're being a great feeder program in the high school.
Well, Mr. Green has done a fantastic job over at Lazar. He talks to all of his students, former students, and he's very well respected, very well liked. And he has done a great job. And of course, our high school puts on wonderful, wonderful performances. If any of you get a chance to go see the performances, you really should. The tickets are cheap and the quality is outstanding.
Can I say something also, Dave? I just want to comment. I agree with, with Mike. When the children were singing Mother Mary, now I want to find that, that just, I just got choked up. And when musicians or singers can move the audience, that's what it's all about. And if there's a way to share with the kids that, I got tears in my eyes because it was just phenomenal. I told Mike that immediately. I was a little embarrassed but really, they did a fantastic job.
Any other general board comments, new business, anything?
Yeah, I have something. There was a nice report given to the board on the referendum and the status. I was just wondering what, what next steps are being taken? I know you, the finance facilities committee?
Did you listen to my report?
I did. But, but, and I, and I read that other report, which was even more informative than, than your report. Not that you're, it was just more detailed. And, you know, so what, we're just going to take it by year or what are we?
Christine, do you want to step in here and talk a little bit about what the, or do you want to?
So, so right now, the referendum was defeated. So we as administrators are trying to come up with a plan to move forward to still address a lot of the needs of the district as we move forward with the HVAC systems, the space issues that we still have to deal with, enrollment and things like that. So that's what we've been doing for the past six weeks and working on that. As I put in the packet for all of you, it's up to the board to start discussing if they want to offer another referendum, as we talked about last time. Did you want to modify things? How did you want to move that way? We are also proceeding on the ROD grants, which we did receive from the state. So we're moving forward with a lot of things like fixing the roofs and different things that we received state aid for. But all these things are now are trying, we're trying to prioritize the list of what we have to do. And a lot of the things that we talked about, it can't get done right away. So we have to reprioritize, you know, like I said, the HVAC systems. So now the auditorium and maybe some of the science rooms at Lazar get bumped down another year or two or even three years later as we take a look at all the things that we have to do. We have a finite amount of money in our capital reserves, just say it's about $8 million that we're able to tap into. But I can't exhaust that all in one year. I have to tap into it for like $2 million and then fix this and fix that and come up with a plan for the next three to five years. So that's what we're working on right now. Barring any, you know, other ideas that the board has with future referendums or something like that.
No, I noticed, you know, some, hey, the HVAC was going to be prioritized, something like that. You know, where we are going to get money from the state if we, if we went out for a referendum on that, you know. That's something that, you know, I saw there were deadlines coming up for if we wanted to go out for a vote in September. If there's free money available to do these projects, let's go get the free money. You know, I, let's, that's what, let's, you know, get the wheels.
Right. So what I shared exactly, we'd have to be moving pretty quickly if we're going to go out for a September referendum. That money was about $5.8 million if you just looked at question two that we went out for before. If you wanted to add or adjust that, we'd still have to go through the state process, which will most likely push it off to a December vote if you decide to do something like that. And then we also have to worry about lead times for just a lot of the internal things. So if we wanted to order HVAC systems or other like products, some of these lead times are about a year away. So, you know, that's, that's how we're always thinking. So we're thinking a year. When can I put it in? Over the summer or after, you know, what they call the second shift? Put things into the schools after the students are done at 3 o'clock. So these are the things that we're trying to contend with. We're talking to the architects to see how we could prioritize what we have to do and what we can do with, you know, our existing monies.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things happening or not happening in holding patterns. And I, I think that it's imperative that we get together as a board in open session to discuss all these things rather than meeting private groups like we did last time. Because I think it's important we all hear the same information. I have confidence in the meeting we had a little while ago with the finance committee. I think they're on the right track. But again, they're looking for some direction from us. And I think it's important that we be unified in whatever we decide to go forward. Just to pick one project may or may not be feasible. But I think from the committee meeting that we had prior, I think you guys want another five, six weeks and it might be worthwhile to have a meeting at that point of an open board just to discuss where the heck we're going. Because we, we can't continue, let's do this, let's get the whole picture. Because you've got a three-year, year, a three educational years we have to look at. We just can't say, John, in my opinion, HVAC now, auditorium next year, classrooms this year, classroom. You've got to look at the whole picture and I think it's worth having a work session that evening and getting it all out in the air so we know where the heck we're going. Because so many questions are being raised and so many questions are not being raised and may be raised behind the scenes. So let's get it all out in the open and see where the heck everyone stands. Because then the administration can get some guidelines of where to go. Because if the majority of horses, no, we don't want to do this, why would I let them waste their time on it?
Should we then maybe add it as an agenda item going forward for the foreseeable future?
Tent item?
A tent item.
I think we have to do something like that, in my opinion, Dave.
Okay, let me ask the board, what would you like to do?
I think we need a special meeting.
Special meeting? You want a special meeting?
An additional meeting.
An additional meeting, so a second meeting?
Just for that program?
For that?
Yes, just for that suspension.
Can I ask how many people want a second meeting in a month? Would be the, what, that'd be the first Tuesday? Well, we're in the first Tuesday on negotiations.
Because we have to find a date to get everyone.
First Tuesday in March.
There's other days, you're right.
They're, they're taken up by negotiations.
I think that we can maybe, don't have to decide the meeting date today. Let's go back to the administration, look at the calendar.
Would that be acceptable then? We'll, we'll find a date as soon as we can?
Maybe before the next meeting or?
Before the next meeting, we'll have another date planned and we will plan to discuss going forward. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Maybe the administration can send out some dates that we can find a consensus on.
Because the sooner we can get that, then the sooner we can start plans.
Yeah, I agree. The longer you wait.
I drink water.
Yeah.
It's a different night to meet, but every night we meet.
And?
I'm not going.
All right, so that's what, we'll send it out then? We're into March already?
Let's be careful, you know. That's not really a choice necessarily, Tom, you know?
Well, we'll send out some dates. We'll send out some dates and Tuesday or something like that. Figure out a special meeting to have a discussion about that.
And what kind of meeting is this? Is this?
That's a good question.
Is this just us chatting and the administrator or is this like a agenda for a bunch of different things? I'm just curious.
A little bit of hearing. It sounds like it would just be a work session. So it would just be more of just an open, public discussion about all the options and whatever's on your mind regarding the referendum.
If the administration has prioritized items that you want to put on the agenda, I think it would help the discussion.
I think that's something the administration, because right now, I don't think they know what we're all thinking. I mean, I'm really, I'm telling you what I'm thinking, but that's not fair to you, you know? We've got to do something. The kids are coming. So it's, you know, whatever you guys decide, but we've got to kick it around. Got to get everyone on the same wavelength.
It sort of sounds to me like maybe this is, like, take our facilities and finance discussion and broaden it out.
I mean, I think that the administration is working hard.
Prioritize.
Trying to prioritize and trying to, you know, figure out what we're going to do with the kids in September. Where are we going to put them? So if, if you could come up with, continue to just come up with options for the board to consider. And we could have, we could have, we can discuss each of those.
We use that as a starting point, have a discussion that night and kick around other ideas.
See, there's other things too, regarding the referendum. We have a lot of capital reserve problems. Better budget, technically. But that could influence, if we don't do HVAC work at school aid, then we don't need this part of the referendum. You know, I thought the meeting before was pretty inclusive, but the committee, I think, I think we're in the whole movement.
Yeah, certainly some of the items that were discussed in the committee meeting.
The whole board has to be aware.
Right. Can I, can I just get a little clarification? Because I, we could come up with, you know, 10 pages of capital improvement things, but that doesn't help us. So like, just be a little more, maybe hear a little more.
The meeting is a jumping off point? I think what was presented at the meeting is a jumping off point, and discussion can, because you guys came up with that, you were...
Is that, that was sent out to us? That, that, that's the same thing?
No, so like, as we move forward, we're starting to slowly build the budget right now, we're talking about what are our priorities and what we have to do, so.
What was in the weekly report this past Friday, that if, if just, if we all just use that as a jumping off point, you know, something, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, that's, that's fine, if you want to use that. Also, during the whole referendum process, that the board spoke about the issues of why we need the referendum in the first place, right? That's, those are the questions, I think, that we should be talking about, because those are still open issues, open problems that the district is going to face, and so how are we going to address them through capital reserve, or second referendum, or other types of issues?
So, so in the facilities meeting, they were laying out our capital reserves and maintenance reserves, and they were trying to prioritize the items that they thought needed to be fixed right away, and things that could be pushed back a little bit. I think combining that with a discussion about where to go, what's left to be discussed, what the existing problems we'll be facing in the future, maybe we can put together an agenda.
The main thing, David, we're all saying the same, let's get together and see what happens. I don't think we have enough direction on one, who are reading, or whatever it might be, but we have to get together.
So at the very least, it just sounds like you want me to put, like, I'm just saying, A, B, and C as different things, just so it could get you oil the machine a little bit, so you can start thinking a little bit, where do you want to go, what you want to...
And I think, I think that some of the, what was presented in your report to the whole board, and also in the finance committee, is, I think, there's some thought, and it kind of came out in discussion last time about, is it prudent to consider a lot of the smaller capital items that, and many of them which would potentially qualify for A, that were in question two, and maybe some others, as is it something we should think of as its own referendum? And then there's the discussion, of course, what do we do about question one, which is still an issue, and so I think there's two ways to kind of like approach it, and I think that the board needs to kind of take in all of that information and see, you know, do we consider going up for a big one again, a more small, a smaller one, or none? I mean, really, that's where we are. It's like, are we going to stay at that same level and try to get what we really think is, is needed? Are we going to kind of scale it back and maybe focus on different things, or is it not prudent to go out for a referendum right now? And I think that decision needs to be made sooner than later.
Yes, I, I agree with Michelle. I don't want us to turn our wheels, and the public is saying, rejecting our referendum, and then we're turning our wheels, and then we go for out for referendum, and it's rejected again. That...
That'll be part of the meeting.
Exactly, exactly. I think, Michelle...
So no, I think it's worthwhile doing, or other people, then at least we give us direction of where the hell we're going.
Okay, so you're going to work on a date for us?
Yes.
And we're going to try to get together an agenda, I'll talk to you more about that, see what we can pull together, what could be prudent, put into that type of an agenda. It sounds like it's a special meeting, so there wouldn't be much other board business at the time?
No.
So...
There would be, you know, unless there was pressing.
Yeah, unless there was pressing, there'd be, there were no other board business, you know, no committee reports unless there was pressing.
What comes to worst if we, if the other meeting's scheduled for February 7th, that's in the afternoon, 4 o'clock, shouldn't affect anything at night, you know?
Right, okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll see what the schedule's like, send out a message to everyone, make sure that the date is acceptable to everyone, and then we'll have a special meeting on this.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anything, any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Public participation session number two, anybody has any other thing that they would like to say or address the board? Give us your comments, your views?
Book reviews.
Your book reviews.
Good evening. Gabrielle O'Roaksbury, resident, High School History Teacher Association President. I was inspired by your discussion of deadlines. If I may ask, please, what is the deadline for a September referendum, and what is the deadline for a December referendum?
I believe it's 60, is it 60 days they had to sign down?
Right, I mean, that's when the state has to, so we would have to start having things for September pretty much kind of wrapped up by March, and then that gives me, because the state needs about six months, if we have to go for a full approval, it could be, you know, fast-tracked, we'd have to look into that. We'd be good for a December one, you know, if we did it in March or something like that. We have to find out if it's allowed to be fast-tracked if we don't change anything. If we are changing the scope of that project, most likely it'll have to go through the whole process again. So you'd be looking at the same timeline we just went through. It'd have to be done probably in March, and then you'd have that approval, the board would have to approve it then sometime in like beginning of August, late July, and everything out there, and you go, and then a December vote again. I think that's most likely, yeah.
Now, as far as the items, I know we broke them up into like, what, 40 little? I'm sorry, just clarifying this one. No public comment, okay. I'd like to close public comment, if that's okay with everyone, thank you. But just clarification real quick, those sections, we had like 40 different projects, right? How did that work?
18.
We had 18. Is that what you're talking about by changing?
If we go with the 18, so we just repackage some or all of the 18, then those are fast-tracked. If we are going to add new projects that we did not consider in the 18, then that pushes the deadlines way back and puts you probably in March.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, so if we just took the old referendum and just said, okay, we're going to keep these and take these out, and now we're all about to say 40% of what we had before, that could be fast-tracked?
Correct.
Right, but we definitely have to still get, we have to check that out. I don't want to speak for the state, they always find a curve all the time.
What kind of other additional projects might be even considered?
Yeah, for the discussion. Okay, want to wrap this up? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to move.
So, thank you. See you all February 20.
Well, it was on page 3 of that packet I gave you, it was just, actually, I got to some of your ideas.